Good morning, everyone. Today is the fifth of September 2024. And it's the special council meeting held today and commencing at eight forty six. We have quite a full public gallery. So I'll call attendance. We have all councillors in attendance here this morning and good morning to you all. I'll now move on to an acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. We'll now move on to the opening prayer. Heavenly Father, we seek you to be with us in this meeting today. Assist us to be an example to others, bringing strength and encouragement in whatever we do, and equip us for the ongoing challenges as they arise. Give the guidance to continue to make wise decisions for both the short and long term benefit of our city and our community, regardless however difficult and unpopular some will be. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. I have no apologies or live of absence. Are there any declarations of interest on the agenda? There are nil. We'll go to item then six point one, which is filling a council vacancy. Today's special committee would determine how the vacancy in Division four will be filled. This is not a common occurrence for Ipswich City Council, and I actually asked councillor Tully when the last time this occurred. I think he said it was the nineteen eighties?
Nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty. So I'll lay out the process and rules as per the Local Government Act and the Local Government Electoral Act for us all. The Local Government Electoral Act, section one six six, section two states fulfilling a vacancy of office of another councillor. The local government must decide by resolution whether the vacancy is to be filled, A, by a by-election, or B, by following the procedure under section one six six A. I'll just read out a section of one, the relevant area of one, section one six six A of the Local Government Act, which is the title to fill in particular vacancies arising during the beginning of a local government term. And section three states that the electoral commission must, A, give a vacancy notice to the runner up who is first in the order of priority, and B, if consent is not given by the runner up on or before the deadline, give a vacancy notice to the runner up who is next in the order of priority, and C, if consent is not given by the runner up, who is next in the order of priority on or before the deadline, repeat the step mentioned in paragraph B until a runner up consents to the appointment on or before the deadline for the runner up. And section four is then if a runner up consents to the appointment on or before the deadline for the runner up, the electoral commission must notify the chief executive officer of our council that the runner up has consented, and B, the local government must fill the vacant office by appointing the runner up. Section five, if there is no runners up remaining, the vacant office must be filled by a by-election. The Local Government Electoral Act, section twenty four, on date of by-election states a by-election to fill a vacancy in the office of a councillor is to be held on the day fixed by the returning officer, and two, that the day must be fixed within two months after the vacancy happens. I've been asked from many residents if we do go to a by-election, would it be held on the same day as the state election on the twenty sixth of October? And that will be up to the electoral commission of Queensland. The legislation states that the vacancy must be filled within two months from the vacancy, which was the thirty first of August, meaning the thirty one, meaning the thirty first of October is the two month period. We have a recent example, councillor Madam, when you resigned from the Queensland Parliament effective from the twenty seventh of January, and the local government election was exactly seven weeks from that date. The state election is only in seven weeks and two days from today, so it is feasible for it to be held on the same day. The motion before us asks council to determine how the vacancy will be filled. So I move that the vacancy in Division four is filled as per section one six six A of the Local Government Act, namely, and I've got that for you, Vicky. So I move that pursuant to section one six six two of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, council fill the Division four vacancy as per section one six six A of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine to appoint the runner up. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. In speaking to that motion, I think the community has made it clear in their point of view on this decision. We are all receiving emails, calls and social media comments from residents, and the vast majority have told us that they do not want a costly by-election, nor do they want to go back to the polls after having voted on this matter just a few months ago. The ECQ estimate a by-election will cost rate pays between two hundred, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars and five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which I know is money that we can't waste. For me, it comes down to three matters. One is the cost, the second one being the fact that the election was held less than six months ago. I think we were, actually this week we celebrated, I guess, five months since we were sworn in, and the fact that the vote was so close as well. I know I'm open to the second, if you'd like to speak to it.
Thank you, Chair. As you've pointed out, the current legislative provisions provide us with two options today, and one of which is the appointment of the runner up in accordance with the provisions under the local government legislation. I've given great thought to this since councillor Cullen submitted his resignation. I have been certainly trying to take a pulse on what our community thinks about the situation in front of us, and trying to weigh up all of the pros and cons around this decision. I haven't heard any arguments that I believe adequately justify a by-election, and we don't know at this point what that by-election might look like. There has been some conjecture that we could potentially opt for a postal vote, but note that that is purely discretionary in the hands. We can request that, but that will be up to the minister to decide based on recommendations from ECQ. Either option, we'll see costs incurred and to be borne by this council. I think it's really important and very relevant to note that the former runner up provisions under the legislation were changed as they were considered undemocratic and could see candidates who receive only a small percentage of the vote elevated to office. That was the motivation and principle that drove and underpinned the changes to the legislation. This does not, however, represent in any way the positional circumstances, in my view, we are currently considering. We have both third and fourth place candidates with a percentage of the vote that is not significantly less than the second place candidate who has now elected to vacate their position. For this reason, I feel very strongly that a direct appointment is appropriate, justified, and in keeping with intention of the legislation. The legislation of the day includes provisions allowing a council to decide that a direct appointment is reasonable and appropriate. These provisions have been included by state legislatures because it is considered that a degree of reasonableness should be applied when making this decision. If it was considered to be out of step with the fundamental principles of democracy and fell short of public expectations, these provisions would not have been included. Indeed, I think it actually speaks to the onus on all of us here today to make use of these provisions where it is considered reasonable and warranted, having considered the relevant circumstances. Political debate or personal views on whether it is democratic or not is not what's required of us in making this decision today. We are obliged to consider and apply the current law of the day. The current legislation built on supporting the fundamental principles of democracy in our society give us as a council the option of avoiding a by-election, incurring unnecessary costs for our city, and forcing residents back to the polls in a very short space of time after the previous election. If a greater more lengthy period of time had passed since the twenty twenty four local government elections, and indeed runner up candidates had a very small percentage of the vote, arguably not represented of the democratic will of the people, then I would be absolutely supportive of a by-election. However, this is very clearly not the case here. I would also like to note the public record of my disdain regarding public commentary, whether truth or merely conjecture, that this decision is being politically driven to achieve an outcome that is not solely, that does not solely have the best interests of our city at its heart and is fiscally irresponsible. At a time when families are struggling under economic financial crisis, and Ipswich City Council is significantly challenged to maintain services and deliver infrastructure in volatile market and economic conditions. To put it in very simple terms, the cost of a by-election, even if it is kept to a minimum, equals, I would suggest, the cost of two to three open space workers that we so desperately need to keep on top of the summer mowing schedule. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. See, I'd like to ask a couple of questions before I open it up. What quotes have you received from the electoral commission of Queensland of how much it would cost to conduct a by-election?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mayor. We have pursued a written quote at the request of the councillors, and that has been included in the report that's available to the council and to the public. But in short, the key advice from the electoral commission of Queensland was that should council resolve to ask the ECQ to conduct a by-election, a cost of between three hundred and twenty thousand up to five hundred and fifty thousand is estimated to deliver electoral services for the around thirty five thousand seven hundred Division four electors. ECQ would provide a more detailed cost estimate that considers the service design and timing, but in the meantime, they advised that it would be reasonable to work toward an average cost of around eleven dollars per elector or three hundred and ninety three thousand dollars.
Thank you. Does Ipswich City Council have up to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for a by-election?
Thank you, Chair. No, we don't. It's obviously an unplanned and unbudgeted operational expense. From a public interest perspective, there are a couple of options available. The first would be that we would move to quickly review and reduce operational service delivery and/or operational programmes or projects. The second would be that we would incur the expense, obviously, and that it would offset against our projected budget surplus for this financial year, that would have consequences for our financial sustainability ratio. They're essentially the options available to council in these circumstances where we have these unplanned expenses.
Thank you, Siobhan. I now open up to the floor for commentary. Thank you councillor Tully.
Yes, Mayor. I wish to give a notice of a foreshadowed motion. I'd ask the committee clerk to display that, which I intend to move depending upon the outcome of this motion.
Again, noting that this doesn't happen very often. Do you mind if I get you to read the motion and explain what that foreshadowed motion is? I know we won't go into debate, but just to state what it is.
I'll state what it is. It's in four parts. A, and this is foreshadowed, so I'm not moving it at this stage. A, that in accordance with section one sixty three of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine in relation to the vacancy in Division four of the city of Ipswich following the resignation of councillor David William Cullen, council decided to fill the vacancy in accordance with section one sixty six two A of the act. B, in accordance with section forty five double A one B of the Local Government Electoral Act two thousand and eleven, council applied to the minister for local government, minister for housing, local government and planning, and minister for public works, the minister for the poll referred to in paragraph A to be conducted by postal ballot for the whole of Division four unless the election is conducted on the same date as the state election. C, that council immediately advised the electoral commission of Queensland of its decision under paragraph A. D, that the council immediately applied to the minister in accordance with paragraph B.
Thank you very much councillor Tully. So that's a foreshadowed motion, and that means that if the current motion to fill by a direct appointment doesn't, is not successful, that we automatically go to discuss this particular motion. So we'll look at, I'll wait till you bring the live motion up, that we go to appoint the runner up. I open that motion up for discussion. Councillor Augustine?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to talk today about the fiscal responsibility, fiduciary responsibility to our constituents and Ipswich as a whole, Mayor. Going to a by-election, Mayor, well, I feel that it's nonsensical. We've had emails, particularly one from Peter from Flunder's View, that's Division one, you know, he stated personally, I volunteered and personally raised money for local communities, sporting organisations and those in need of local areas for over two decades, Mayor. The proposed spend on this exercise would be far better allocated into areas and if additional funding is available. Then we have Wayne from Division three. As councillors, you are there to work in the best interest of the city, and to hold a by-election is not in the best interest of Ipswich. I implore you to vote against holding a by-election. Then Deputy Mayor, I just want to refer to you. On Tuesday just gone, during our Economic and Cultural Development Meeting, you raised some warranted concerns about us having a ceremony for Olympic and Paralympics athletes. You wanted to put on your financial management cap for a second, and I replied, oh, I love when you put your fiscal responsibility hat on. Deputy, may I implore you to put that back, that hat back on today. Mayor, as of yesterday, March the first, the fifth month since we were sworn into office, former councillor David Cullen was sick for approximately about two months of those five months, and since the election, Division four has not had the full representation. Division four needs fair representation as soon as possible. That is why I'll put my oath when sworn in, that was to faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of office to the best of my judgment and ability. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. I put for further discussion?
Just a point of order, Mayor, in relation to the wording. I think it needs a correction that in the second line it says section one sixty six A, I think it should be one sixty six in brackets two in brackets little a. Because there's no, there's no section in the act of one sixty six capital A.
So it should be one sixty six A and brackets three?
No, one sixty six in brackets two in brackets little a.
Oh, you're saying just little, just from cap?
Councillor Tully, we can, sorry, through you, Chair, if I made that. There is an attachment to the report that has the legislative, some legislative extracts in there. So there is a section one six six capital A, and of course, there is a section one six six that has a two and an A, as you point out. I guess let's just work out what the correct provision is.
Well, I'm reading from the act that the provision of filling it is under section one sixty six, and in subsection two, it has the two options, A, which is a by-election, or B, following the procedure under one sixty six A. It's quite confusing. I thought that was the operative provision under which we were making that decision, but I'll.
Thank you. As the mover, I'll explain the reason why I've used that particular one. It says under section one sixty six two, and I'll just reread that, which I did read at the beginning, that the local government must decide by resolution whether to fill by a by-election or following the procedure of section one sixty six A. So that's why I think that should stay there. And then it says council fill the Division four vacancy as per section one six six A of the local government act, which talks, which is about going straight to the runner up. So I believe that that particular motion is sound. It's also the same resolution that has been used by councils in this term. So Rockhampton Council, for instance, had a vacancy this, just recently in July, and they did a appointment by, as per section one six six A. So it's the same resolution, as well as Cassowery Council, who also had to fill a vacancy this term as well, who also decided to appoint rather than go to the cost of a by-election.
I'll accept your ruling.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, councillor Genelly and councillor Madden, all three of you called for this meeting, so I'll hand over to you to comment on the motion, since you called this meeting.
I have no comments at this time. Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor, I have no contribution to make to this motion.
Ditto, Mayor.
Any other discussion? I'll move to the right of reply. I'll reiterate the three reasons why I think that we should proceed with this. The vote was less than six months ago. It is one of the democratic ways to fulfil this vacancy. It was quite a close vote, and I note that Mr Mulligan received more votes than a couple of councillors in here in this room, and the cost from the ECQ is up to five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So to be honest, I'm not sure how any of us could justify this unnecessary expense to our ratepayers, particularly during a cost living crisis, when we could put that money to much better use. Our community is asking us to put politics aside and make a sensible decision on their behalf, and I certainly hope we can work together to do that today. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's myself, councillor Augustine and councillor Doyle are for. Those against? Those against are councillor Madsen, the deputy mayor, councillor Tully, councillor Genelly and councillor Madden. So that motion was defeated. We now move on to the foreshadowed motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the foreshadowed motion, which I indicated previously.
Yes. Do I have a second for that? You can count someone a second. I'll hand over to the mover to speak to it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. In supporting this motion, I think the key issue, what price can we put on democracy? This is not just a short term vacancy, where it's towards the end of the term, like in the middle of the term or the end, and different legislative provisions apply in that case. We're talking about a length of approximately three and a half years, and even though the voters of Division four have voted recently for a period of three and a half years, in my view, it's appropriate from a democratic point of view that the, all of the voters in Division four and all of the potential candidates have the right to nominate for this position. I contrast it just by way of analogy to a vacancy in state or federal parliament. There is no count back there, except in the state of Tasmania. There is no count back. There is a by-election which is called that is standard for other levels of government in Australia. The purpose of the postal ballot is to, for the very purpose of saving money and probably a saving time. And by analogy, again, I raised the issue of two thousand and sixteen in the Lockley Valley Council, where the sitting mayor of the day had renominated for the position of mayor after and nominations had already closed, and the government exercised its powers under the relevant legislation to delay the poll and to have a postal ballot. That means that, because on the, on the usual election day, council election day in two thousand and sixteen, in March two thousand and sixteen, that was also a referendum across the state to bring in four year terms of office at state level. So the government of the day didn't want to force people to go back to the polls within a very short period of time, and the way they utilised the provisions of the act was to enable a postal ballot to be conducted. And from all reports, I believe, it was widely accepted and certainly. And, um, certainly, um, you know, the community was able to make its mind up and demonstrate who they wanted to vote for, for the, uh, mayor of, uh, Lockyer Valley. Um, in relation to budgetary issues, as I say, a postal ballot or an election on the same day, which is what the paragraph B indicates, that if it's on the same day as the state election, there's obviously savings. Um, and it's an opportunity, like in a reverse situation, we had a, um, a by-election for the seat of Ipswich West on the same day as the, um, as the, um, council elections, um, back in March. Um, I'll reserve my right of reply, but I'd urge councils, councillors to, uh, support this motion.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor, councillor Madden is the second. Would you like to speak?
I would, Mayor. Thanks very much. Uh, just revisiting the issue of which section applies. Uh, a section of the Local Government Act, a section 166 two of the Local Government Act 2009 provides that where the office of a councillor becomes vacant during the first year of the four-year term, the local government must decide by resolution whether the vacancy is filled by way of a by-election or by the procedure provided in section 166A, which provides that the vacancy is filled by the runner-up next in order, which in this case would be the candidate who came third. The Act also provides that the vacancy must be filled within two months of the position becoming vacant. As well, the Act provides that a resolution, the resolution must be supported by a majority of the remaining local government councillors. Uh, after careful consideration, I've decided to support the motion now being considered that the vacant position of councillor for Division Four will be filled by way of a by-election. Unfortunately, the Act does not provide any instructions to councillors as to matters they must consider when deciding which of the two options apply. But I can advise what factors I have considered. Firstly, I've considered the democratic process that we follow in Australia. As one resident advised me, any decision, um, made by all councillors to give the job to the person who came third is hardly democratic. Or as another resident put it, residents of Division Four should get to decide as it is us they will represent. We voted for a state seat at the local government election, so we can vote for a local government councillor at the upcoming state election. This last comment raises a critical issue, which is if a by-election is to be held, what form will it take? It could be held to coincide with the state election will be held on, which will be held on October 26th. Or alternatively, it could be held on another date as a standalone election. From the information provided in the report, it appears the Electoral Commission estimates the costs of an election held on the date of the state election would be approximately $320,000, while a standalone election would cost approximately $550,000. But the motion does not provide, propose either of these options. It proposes a third option, which is provided for in the Act, which is much less costly and much more convenient for voters. That is, that the election is held as a full postal vote. Full postal vote, uh, voting in local government elections is not uncommon in Queensland. In 2012, the Lockyer Regional Council held its election by a full postal vote. In the recent 2024, local government elections held on March 15, uh, held in March, 15 local government councils held full postal ballots, ballots, while Isaac Regional Council has had held a full postal ballot, ballot for one of its divisions. As well, we only have two months to fill the vacant position. Time is of the essence, and a full postal vote would provide for a speedier, less costly and less complex election. Finally, uh, a by-election for the vacant position of Division Four would allow for any unsuccessful candidates in the 2024 Ipswich Council election or potential candidates who are unable to nominate for the March election, to nominate for the position, which is how democracy works in Australia. I support the motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Madden. I now open up to the floor. Councillor Doyle?
Yes, thank you.
Oh.
So councillor Doyle?
Oh, sorry, my apologies.
Um, thank you, Chair. There seems to be, um, discussion this morning that suggesting an application to the minister for a postal vote is a given, that it will be granted. Um, the, the legislation, um, sets out a number of requirements and it's clearly discretionary. Um, it, maybe CEO, uh, is there somebody that can come up to the lectern to talk about what that process looks like? What are our chances of actually getting a minister's approval for that?
Uh, through the chair, I can ask the manager of executive services to provide a response. So I will, I'm certainly not an expert in postal votes, I'm afraid. So I would need to call on Mr Wilson, if he wouldn't mind coming forward and just providing whatever information we do have to hand, um. If that's okay through you, Chair?
Yes, here.
Good morning. Wade Wilson, manager of executive services.
Uh, thank you, Mr Wilson. There's been discussion around, um, certainly the alternate, um, motion around a postal vote. Um, and there's been, um, lots of, um, um, discussion or examples given of previous postal votes, but, but nothing talking about where a minister might decline, an application by council, um, for that to occur. Do we know what our chances are when I have a look at the conditions within the legislation? Does seem to be discretionary.
Uh, the only specifics I have on that is my understanding as well that it would be a discretionary decision for the minister. Uh, it's also a decision that must be made before the date of the election is set. Um, and effectively what that means is a decision of the council is required to hold a by-election. Uh, the minister would need to make a determination under that application. Um, a returning officer would be appointed and a date for the election would be set. So there is a little bit of a process, but that would be one of the first decisions made, um, if this was to proceed.
Do you think the advice to the minister, um, from the department might include commentary, um, around the, um, benefits or negatives of conducting a postal vote, um, at the same time, for, for local government, um, at the same time as the state government election? That it, it could muddy the waters, um, and confuse voters who potentially think they've, they've done their postal vote and don't need to show up on the day. That, that's where my mind goes to, um, when I think about what they're weighing up, but I guess it's.
Yeah, my, my knowledge of, um, the range of scenarios that the Electoral Commission consider is quite limited. But they would obviously consider a range of factors in, in how and where to hold the election, regardless, and the, the overlap between the state, the voter experience, the whole range of things. Um, and any of the postal voting factors would be a decision for the minister, as far as I'm aware.
Um, and so if we, if this motion is successful and we make that application, and then the minister denies that, is that automatically a by-election then? And given this process might take a little while, that we'll see potentially the by-election sitting outside of timing around the state election date? So we, we could potentially go to two elections within a fortnight of each other, if you live in Division Four?
Yeah, I genuinely don't have the timeframes. Um, that would be written out, I would imagine, under the Local Government Electoral Act.
Yeah, so an application to the minister, though, would take time. Um, and given there's a state election coming up, I'm just wondering how quickly or not that might be actioned. A request to the minister's office. CEO?
If I can, um, just referring to the legislation, just while Mr Wilson was, um, responding, I can certainly highlight the kind of the three-step process that's outlined in the legislation, um, through you, Chair, if that's all right? So, um, yeah, section 45 AAA says that a local government may apply to the minister, as we're discussing, for a poll to be conducted by postal ballot, uh, for an election in all or part of, or a division in the local government's area. Um, the next thing that must happen is the minister must refer the application made under that section to the electoral commissioner for the commissioner's recommendation about whether the application be, should be approved. And then the electoral commissioner must consider the application and give the minister a written recommendation about whether the application should be approved and the reasons for the recommendation. Before making the recommendation, the electoral commissioner may ask the local government for further information. The electoral commissioner reasonably requires to make the recommendation. And in making the recommendation, the electoral commissioner must have regard to the following matters, as you, um, mentioned. Councillor Doyle, there are factors there. So those matters must be, uh, considered. Uh, the reasons why the poll should be conducted by postal ballot. Section B, the costs of conducting the poll by postal ballot compared to the costs of conducting the poll using polling booths. C, the number of persons enrolled on an electoral roll for an electoral district or part of an electoral district included in the area to which the application relates. D, the population density and distribution in the area to which the application relates. And E, whether a poll has previously been conducted by postal ballot in the area to which the application relates. And the next section, after receiving the electoral commissioner's recommendation about the application, the minister must consider the application and decide to approve or not approve the application. And it then sets out that the minister must consider, you know, all of those factors and then make a decision. Uh, the decision, at section 45A, the decision of the minister or the electoral commissioner under this subdivision is not subject to appeal. And that's, that's the extent of it. To your question about how quickly we would write to the minister, we would obviously make that a priority, given the, the timeframes that we must, uh, that the council must comply with. Um, but then it's a, you know, it's obviously a matter for the minister and the electoral commissioner as to the pace of their reply. I'm sure they would give it priority. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
In discussion, I note that, um, the state government go into caretaker on the first of October. So they won't be able, be permitted to make a decision, um, of this magnitude. So that's in 17 business days. So I guess as part of discussion, I, I query whether, obviously, even if you've got the letter out today to, to the minister. She will seek advice from the electoral commissioner. I don't know how long that takes. And, um, and obviously then it comes back to the minister. Again, can they go into caretaker in 17 business days? Um, I'll now open up for more discussion. Councillor Tully?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In a democracy such as Australia, one would think that today's matter would be an easy decision for this council to make. Indeed, if this same circumstance was to present itself in seven months from now, there would be no discussion, no decision, as a by-election would be automatic. The only difference here today, at this moment in time, is that the legislation permits council to choose whether we advise the Electoral Commission to appoint a runner-up or if we go back to the polls for a by-election. Believe me, when I say that the irony of voting today on whether the public get a vote on who represents them is not lost on me. I firmly believe that the public have a right to choose. That, of course, is the very point of democracy. It is the will of the people. And despite some of the commentary against a by-election, the mere notion of going against the will of the people is not to be trifled with. The suggestion that money be the deciding factor does not fly with me either, as democracy is not conditional upon cost. If it were to be, then the legislation would stipulate as such. And as previously stated, if this situation were to occur at a time, at this time next year, it would not be a factor that came into consideration at all. This council spends thousands of dollars each year on its Shape Your Ipswich platform, seeking public input on council ideas, proposals and large projects. Yet some would suggest we baulk at one of the fundamental rights of our citizens, the right to choose who represents them. In this age of social media, it's easier to whip up a frenzy, as you've done, Mayor, suggesting an amount of well over $500,000 for a by-election. We've since discovered it is likely to be well below that amount. And with the motion here today proposing a postal vote election, should the minister so decree, the cost is likely to be much lower again. Mayor, I'd suggest it would be certainly much lower than the reported costs for the design of your office undertaken at your request. In fact, I believe that we can easily find the money in the budget without loss of services, a reduction in programs or an impact on projects. Just this week, as part of our committee meetings, 25,000 was found and will make a great start to this process. One of the greatest gifts of freedom, a freedom preserved and protected by the blood of those before us, is the election of a democratic government, a government of the people, by the people and for the people. It is not for us, the elected, to choose, but the electorate of Division Four. I can't help but think that such a discussion surrounding cost would not only offend our former colleague, David Cullen, but perhaps the general electors of Division Four. Dave has given of himself to this city for many years. His passion undeniable. Knowing his desire to represent the people of Division Four, I'm deeply saddened that he could not fulfil that dream. And while true, he may have only been a representative for a short while, standing down because of health reasons, that too should not factor into consideration. It was the will of the people of Division Four that both he and councillor Madden be their elected representatives for the next four years. Therefore, the next three and a half years are just as important. And the electors of Division Four deserve the right to decide who should represent them and not settle for a councillor of convenience. In a decision such as this, some may suggest there is no right or wrong answer. I beg to differ. With three and a half years remaining, this shouldn't be left to chance or regulated to a runner-up. Like myself, several councillors have received pro forma styled emails suggesting we go the easy way. But it's been the general person in the street who has swayed me on this matter, and more importantly, one single comment, which remains with me and reinforces my position. And that is, no one likes to vote, but take that right from them and they'll fight you for it. I agree, and I'd rather fight the minority than the majority. A by-election will allow for a contest of ideas, policy and vision, and more importantly, a choice for the people of Division Four. Our city motto of "Confide a recta agens", be confident when doing right, implores us to make decisions confident that they are right, the right decisions for the people of Ipswich. I'm confident that this is the right decision for the people of Division Four. Therefore, I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, councillor Tinnelli. I open up for any other discussion? Councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just, um, reiterate, um, my comments, um, around the, um, issue of democracy. There's been.
Point of order, Mayor. The, the standing orders are quite clear that a person in council can only speak once to a particular matter. And I think because this is a, a meeting of, of an issue of major statutory importance, we need to stick, um, quite strictly with those, um, procedures.
Yep. Uh, thank you, councillor Tully. It, it is correct that our, um, meeting procedures policy states everyone speaks to the matter once. But I think anyone who's been here will note that I take a more open approach, that I do believe that we should be having this free-flowing dialogue and discussion. I'd like, I would like to continue to allow that to happen. It is a really big decision.
I don't think I've just seen that in any previous meeting before, where you've allowed free-flowing discussion. You've always adhered to the meeting procedure.
Excuse me, that is not correct. I've allowed at all, all but one meeting, uh, in the last four and a bit terms to allow people to have multiple, and, and the evidence is there on our live stream, to have multiple discussions. Uh, make the point more than once. So I note that what you've, you've said, but I'm going to allow, I think it's a big decision. I would like people to continue to, um, um, put their views forward.
Well, I'll continue with my point of order and quote section 10.7.6, which says explicitly, each councillor shall speak no more than once to the same motion or same amendment, except as a right of reply. Well, that, that of course is for the mover of the motion. I think, as I said, because this is a, uh, a, a meeting to, to consider, and we haven't had, had this for many years, a very strict requirement under two pieces of legislation. I believe that it's extremely important, um, if, if, if people want to open it up to continued debate, well, there's a procedure by, the, the way in which councillor Doyle or any other councillor can, can do that. And that is for a suspension of the relevant, uh, procedure.
Okay, thank you. In that case, uh, councillor Tully, like I said, we're trying to practise democracy here. I will move for a suspension of standing orders for, for councillors to be able to speak freely and democratically on this particular motion. So I ask that people can speak more than once, uh, to the matter, because I think it's a really important matter. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Augustine. I'll put that to the vote.
I propose an amendment that, that we, 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 that it should be they be permitted to speak twice. Uh, otherwise, uh, yeah, there could be multiple interruptions on this issue.
Point of order, Chair. I'll, um, I will withdraw, um, further commentary. Um, it's pretty clear. It's a fait accompli and, um, my colleagues don't really care what I've got to say, so I just won't speak anymore. So I'll withdraw.
Councillor Doyle has the floor, councillor Tinnelli. Excuse me, councillor Doyle has the floor. Do not interrupt.
Not interested in providing any further commentary. Thanks, Chair.
With your indulgence, Chair, can I please speak for the first time?
Well, we're actually debating a motion on the standing, whether we're going to suspend standing orders. But yes, so I have moved to suspend standing orders for councillors to speak multiple times on this matter, as we have for every other council meeting, and councillor Augustine has seconded that. I know you've suggested amendment, I will say no. I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's just myself and councillor Augustine, so that motion didn't get carried, so the standing orders are not suspended. So we're going to, and I guess in that case, I've already spoken to the matter. I am disappointed I can't speak further. And we're debating democracy and our councillors have been gagged. Deputy Mayor, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Chair. Making this decision on finances alone, to me, I believe, is inappropriate. When building a budget, a contingency reserve is fundamental for responsible financial management. This is an allowance for emerging events, and every councillor in this chamber is familiar with emerging events that cannot be avoided. I am certain there are adequate contingencies in this council's finances for postage and incidentals for the sake of democracy. My role in this decision is to make the situation as fair as practically possible. The residents need to choose, and indeed the eligible candidates need to choose. I believe the role will be filled by the best choice for Division Four, and really importantly, on their own terms. The terms of the residents, and indeed the terms of the future successful councillor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Madden.
I just wanted to use my opportunity to say I'm disappointed by some of the comments made in the chamber today, and I wanted to further extend that to express my disappointment at some comments made in the community, which I need to use this platform to rebuke. In terms of the two people who were unsuccessful in Division Four at the last election, Russell Milligan and Sue Dunn, I actually like both of them and find them to be more than capable people. What I've been considering this morning actually flows on from that in that I don't know what, well, when I've been deliberating on the matter, the issue for me has been, I need to consider the alternative. What would I do if I didn't like the people who were potentially going to be appointed? And I've considered that, and I'm not convinced that everyone in this room will be seeking, this is just my personal view, I'm not convinced everyone in the room would be seeking appointment if they didn't like the runner-up. So that leads me down a path with my brain and how I apply logic in that I need to make a decision that's consistent regardless of who would be in that position. So for me, I believe we need to put the vote back to the people of Division Four, for them to select their representative. And that's part of a broader issue that I have with politicians appointing other politicians. In this instance, that's what the Act allows us to do if we take one option, rather than the people get to decide the representative by the other option. And the Rockhampton matter that occurred four years ago is part of that conversation for sure. What happened there?
So, point of order, was it four years ago? It happened in July this year in Rockhampton.
I'm talking about the Rockhampton mayor in 2020, so thank you.
I withdraw my point of order.
Thank you. Which led to a change in the legislation, as I'm sure you'll remember, because there was a lot of unrest that it would have been a perverse outcome. Only one person contested against the mayor in that election, and the mayor that resigned had won by a significant majority, which led to this being added into the Act for the council to make a decision. I think the legislation should be more prescriptive so that councillors aren't appointing this early in the term. There's three and a half years to run on this term. That's longer than a federal term of office. It's a substantial amount of time that someone's making a decision. And fundamentally, I just think it's the people's choice, and it needs to be the people's choice. I just can't reconcile the matter that I've disclosed. What would people do if they did not like who was in third place? And if you look within yourself and you say, all right, it is, it actually critically is, because when you start to have those thoughts, it's clear that it's like, all right, well, it shouldn't be about that in any way whatsoever.
So if there's any comments?
I'll ask for an apology, councillor Doyle.
We've been gagged, so we have to...
Well, I was actually received...
Point of order, Mayor, you weren't gagged. You were given the opportunity to accept an amendment, and you declined it.
I'll disagree with your opinion, but you're entitled to your opinion. Thank you, councillor Madden.
Well, it's on record.
For me, as a matter of finalisation, it's important for me that I have a consistent position that I would apply regardless of who was potentially to be appointed. For me, that is to let people vote on the matter in the electorate for their own representative, because it shouldn't be on a politician to appoint someone else that sits at the same table as them to make decisions. I know as a matter of technicality, that appointment would be afforded by the ECQ, but... Yes, but councillor Doyle, thank you for another interjection, but I would just start the...
So, Chair, please accept my apologies.
Yes, well, I would further add that as part of democracy, people are actually allowed to consider and state that they think legislation could be improved, and I would say that in this case. So unfortunately, I have to end on that note due to multiple interjections. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that everyone now has spoken at least once. So in that case, we do go to the right of reply, councillor Tully?
Sorry, Mayor, I haven't spoken on this one.
I haven't, you haven't?
No.
Apologies. Do you wish to speak to councillor Augustine?
Yes. I think there's a narrative being thrown around that democracy is only to go to a by-election. The Local Law Government Act gives us two options. So to infer that democracy is only one way, I think, is, yeah, it's not correct. There are two processes here. We've been given two options. So for us to say that the one option of going to the next in line is not democratic is very offensive for those that think that that's the way to go. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Augustine. I'll agree. And I can say that as the only person in these chambers who's actually worn a uniform and said that they'll sacrifice their life for these democratic freedoms, I'm very offended by some of the things that you've stated today, councillor Tully. I'll hand over to you now, councillor Tully, for the right of reply.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to councillors for their contribution. Let me say that these standing orders weren't, or meeting procedures, weren't prepared by this council. They were prepared and approved by the former administrator. There is a methodology which can be used to enable persons to speak more than once and for longer than the normal permitted maximum. Having said that, I just reiterate that in circumstances of this where we're making a decision in relation to state legislation on a very important matter, that it behoves us to act strictly in accordance with those meeting procedures. I just wanted to mention the provisions under the Local Government Electoral Act 2011, just to clarify a couple of issues. The section that was mentioned was forty-five AAA. It's actually forty-five AA, which is the relevant provision. And it is correct that the minister is required to refer any request to the Electoral Commission of Queensland for their advice and recommendation. Now, it's not discretionary on the minister. It's not just the flip of a coin. Section forty-five two of the Act says that in deciding whether to approve the application, the minister must have regard to A, the electoral commissioner's recommendation and the reasons for the recommendation, B, and the matters mentioned in forty-five, section forty-five AB. So it's not discretionary. It's not a flip of the coin. It's a properly considered decision that the minister must make and has made in the past. It is true that we have two options. Both options are the law of the day. Both options are the law of the day. The government has invested in this council and the seventy-seven councils in Queensland at the decision-making process in this matter. I'll just finish on this point, that my view is that the motion is fair and democratic and assures that the people of Division Four have a proper say in the election of their next councillor.
Thank you, councillor Tully. We'll go to the vote. Those in favour of recommendations A through to D, please raise your hand. And it's councillor Madden, the deputy mayor, councillor Tully, councillor Tully and councillor Madden. Those against, myself, councillor Augustine and councillor Doyle, that motion has passed. So that is the only matter on this here. I'd like to thank those who've participated and thank those who came in the public gallery to exercise your democratic right to come in here, including Mr Milligan. Thank you very much for coming in. I will close the meeting now at nine forty. We do have our very first advocacy advisory committee that was meant to start at nine. May I suggest we start that at ten o'clock in the Clermont Room, if that's okay? Thank you very much.